Okay, well, I'll call the meeting to order. This meeting is just basically an informational session. We're going to talk about clubhouse childcare options that we have. And so I'll turn it over to you, Sean.
Okay, well, our featured speaker here this evening is going to be Troy Miller from LHB Architects. He's going to be assisted by a variety of people. John Hewnich from K.A., we have George Sigsworth, our maintenance person here, Cheryl Meyer, elementary principal, and Nina Hutton, our clubhouse director. And there are other folks in the room that have other thoughts and comments and questions, so they may help too. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Troy. Head up to the mic and show us what you've got, if you could, please.
Good evening. We have been talking about what to do with clubhouse, childcare, early learning center, elementary school, and what would be the best impact for the money? What would take care of the most needs across a number of buildings? And what would become most affordable when we're looking at the overall budget? And so we've been spending, Cheryl, probably the better part of two years talking about options. And as recently as today, we brought John along, made sure that he was part of the conversation today, so that we're talking in real time about the design along with the cost and budget. And I think all of you have a packet in front of you that kind of start to go through and take a look at and get a better understanding of what the needs are. And the needs at the elementary school have been extensive. A lot of them, George, has taken care of over the last summer with the mechanical improvements, some of the roofing and things of that nature. We've repaired a lot of the exterior masonry items, and there's a few left with regard to the foundation and whatnot. But there are still needs that exist in that building, and some of them are programmatic, such as secured entry. How do we get enough rooms for all the different program functions? How do we start to separate some of the programs, like the early learning center, clubhouse, and some of those components with regard to the other elementary pieces? And how do we do it in a way that keeps all the program spaces together? So that you don't end up with, let's say, three first grade rooms here, and then the fourth first grade room and fifth first grade room all the way on the other end of the building? And how does that whole pinwheel process work? And, you know, as Nina, Cheryl, and I have been meeting, there's always compromise that goes with something when you say, "We only got this much money to spend. This would be nice, but what are the compromises in each of the various locations and places and pieces?" And how do we get something that is going to make staff happy, is going to make George happy with regard to making sure all the maintenance things are being tackled, so that that list continues to get shorter, right? I mean, that's a big part of what we've been talking about in terms of referendum. And then what do we do with regard to the community's desire? And we've heard from a number of them out there, business leaders and whatnot, that are really concerned about the early learning center and what the capacity of that space is. So if you kind of look at the points, you know, that kind of sums it up, is what are all those pieces? How do they come together? And how do they fit within a budget that people feel like can be supported, and not only supported in the room, but supported out in the community? Next slide. Electrical systems is part of it. You know, anytime we do an addition to that building right now, the electrical is the biggest concern. The capacity of the electrical system is, for the most part, tapped out. So if you're looking at doing an addition, how do we make improvements to that system and still have, you know, enough budget left for other things? Because electrical systems are things that can become very, very costly as you start looking at what needs to be accomplished. Next slide. And that also gets into some of the special systems, like the generator, some of the control panels, even some of the low voltage, and how those kind of are extended throughout the building when you look at any one particular location. Next slide. So we talked about what about the PK, which is pre-kindergarten through second-grade building challenges and options? And there are four critical things that need to be addressed as we go through it, and I've kind of touched on all of them already. When we originally started this process, remember, I think the first time we came up with an option for a freestanding building is almost been two years. And so prices have continued to escalate. Don't need to talk to you about supply chain and everything else that John's facing when he's trying to pull together budgeting and what do you have for a contingency, especially something that won't be bid for another 14 months if we're lucky? And because that's how long it's going to take from the time we get to the referendum date and then the time it takes to produce the drawings. So John's kind of taking a spitball approach of, this is what inflation has been from when we originally started this process to where it is today and where it will be in the future when we start looking at actually getting numbers from contractors that are real. So looking again at the safe and secure entry challenges, all the program areas wanting to be close and concise and close to one another, and then that PK component as well. Next slide. Again, we looked at that first option and said, "If we were to do a PK program, what would that look like?" And originally, when we started out, we were talking about numbers, you know, around $8 million, and that number has continued to climb, you know, over the last 18 months. And you've seen that number now as you start to look at the budget numbers that are kind of at the end of the packet. You know, I think right now the number is somewhere between $12 million plus by the time you look at the site, the building, and all of those things. So we started to say, "That's a lot of money." And you start looking at what can be accomplished with that and say, "Well, a lot of those program spaces already exist at the elementary school, so would it be prudent to spend all that money on expanding those programs, and then you still have to clean that square footage, heat that square footage, staff that square footage? Wouldn't it be more prudent to say, 'Let's make that investment at the elementary school and try to meet the needs of what Cheryl has along with Nina,' and then also address some of the concerns that George has on the building?" Next slide. So we started looking at it, and believe it or not, we're going to jump all the way ahead to option four, because options two and three were options that were developed 18 months ago, and those budgets are well beyond what we think, you know, is going to be something that can be supported. So we started to say, "Well, how do we start to zero in and make something that's more realistic?" So we've been pairing it back, pairing it back, and pairing it back. And option four here is kind of the grand idea of saying, "What would the building and site look like if money wasn't an option?" You know, I shouldn't say that. Options two and three were kind of the, "What if money wasn't an option or wasn't an issue?" To something where we begin to scale it back to something more manageable and looking at the site as, "What is it that we can accomplish?" You know, as we start to zero in and say, "What are the important things in this project that we would want to carry forward? What are the things that can be done in the future if we wanted to do something that's a little bit more elaborate, that maybe down the road, if there's an extra $2 million, could we add space here or there?" So without wanting to kind of force everything into one box and say, "What is it that we can do now? What is it that can be done in the future? And what are the things that just won't be redone?" Because we have spent money on the building already, you know, over the last few years with the lobby space and a number of other pieces. What are those things that preserve the investments that have been made as well as think forward and to say, you know, if the building continues to grow or evolve, we don't want to limit it in that way either? So option four began to kind of begin that exploration of saying, "What is it that we want to do? What is it we want to accomplish? And how do we continue to rethink the building and re-craft what it can be and find out what are the things that aren't workable?" There are going to be things that aren't workable, and through this process, we've been discovering those kind of one at a time, because we take information from your team over there, and I go back to the office, I put things on paper, and I come back, and Cheryl says, "What were you thinking? I know I said I need five rooms, but not there." And so, again, we're just kind of putting little bubbles on the paper over the top of the existing building and say, "What works? If we do the addition here," in this case, the addition is located in this spot, "if we do the addition there, what are the compromises that occur?" And so if we go to the next slide. We start to look at the budget and creating narratives with John and his team. But, you know, also, as we go through and do this, we talk about what is it that's workable? And as we went through, some of the things that we talked about are clubhouse really needs to be up with the early learning center. This 4K program really needs to be down here with K. And again, really trying to flush out and say, "What are the relationships that need to exist? Where do they need to happen? And then where does that square footage need to be?" Kind of moving forward. So next slide. So in building number five, this again kind of happened at the same time, just moving some of those pieces around again, looking at the early learning center in this corner, moving Montessori up here with 4K. And again, as we move things around, oftentimes I get feedback from the team, and they say, "This is what we need. We need these rooms. We need these spaces." And then when I show them, it's, "No, that's not going to work. You've got all the spaces, but they're in all the wrong places." So this was just another revision or another iteration of saying, "How do the pieces move around to try to keep the program stuff together within the building and try to, you know, kind of continue to focus on and bring in that budget?" So option five, you know, again, was just one of those iterations where we were saying, "If we put special ed where the current administration is, we don't have to do a lot of renovations to that space, right? Special ed is already compartmental. They use a lot of small spaces. We've got other things like a staff lounge and some storage that can take that without major renovations. But it still gives us an opportunity to put the elementary administration here. If the secured entry comes to this side instead of here, now we've got the early learning center located here. The rest of the elementary school is open and available." And one of the things that we're really trying to focus on is, "Where can the early learning center be so that there's not the disruption of kids going through it all the time, as well as around the hallway and things of that nature?" So we kept coming back to, well, yep, we got the clubhouse, or we got Montessori up here, we've got 4K, we've got early learning center here before we had those flipped. And really, we started settling in on, "The early learning center wants to be up here." It's easy to just close a door and say, "That program's up there off all by itself. It's easy to expand in the future if need and expectations of the community continue to grow with regard to that component." It creates a secured entry right here, if you go back two slides to option four. So it creates a secured entry right here where it can be managed by relocating administration again. But we still had this issue of 4K coming through the early learning center. How do all of these pieces start to work? And in this case, we have art and music there, which was a big cost. So if you jump ahead to number six. Number six is not in your packet, and that's because we literally created it... What time, Cheryl?
I think it is though. I think it's in the new packet.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh, you were...
You're terrific.
Oh, my goodness. So we literally created this option, starting at four o'clock today. We finished at 5:30. But I think we're now getting close to the point where everybody's feeling comfortable that we have a budget and a work skill that starts to come together in that neighborhood of 8.5 million, John, I think is what you were saying. And we're still, we're still a little bit loose and rough on that in terms of, "Can we get this addition right here a little bit smaller? You know, what are the pieces that we can do to try to pull it in a little bit more yet, if that's what the desire is?" But you can see here that we've got the early learning center with a possible future addition with clubhouse. We have the secured entry located here with the elementary school administration. We have special ed, storage, Title I, all of those programs, making use of the existing facility or amenity that is the current administration area. We have, this is the Montessori. And then we've got first, second, 4K, and K located together at this end of the building. And we still have conversations that were happening, if this is the best place for art and music, or should art and music be up here? But those are all things that we'll continue to flush out. So with this option, we also have, we're replacing a good part of the electrical service coming into the building to make sure we have enough capacity for not only what's currently there, but also for the addition. We have also some improvements to the exterior skin and tunnel, because we're budding up against it, so we automatically take care of those areas. We have preserved an opportunity for a future addition for the one program that would potentially grow. And right now, what we're showing is that early learning center component is increasing its space by two rooms. And right now, in conversation, it's felt that not only could we increase it two rooms, but we could also do that with almost the same number of staff we currently have. So we're increasing the number of children that can be served with almost the same number of staff. It's still connected to this part of the building, so we have the cafeteria, large motor, all of those things right here in this facility. We have the Montessori occupying existing rooms. We have a couple of sink plumbing needs that we need to take care of. And then the library, we're not doing anything with at this time. That would be a future project down the road if that needs to be or wants to be renovated. And the rest of this, all, the addition now happens in this area. So this is the addition, and it accommodates all of this. So we've got first, second, kindergarten, 4K, and those areas could flip-flop. I think right now, actually, second grade's down here, first grade's up there. So regardless of what is shown on the paper, you know, we'll do what's right to make sure that it's consistent with what is currently there. We would have provisions there for future plumbing to expand and renovate toilet rooms. And the other thing is, it gives Cheryl a full building, which is a full five sections. So right now, that's something that she's grappled with from year to year, is what grades are maybe four sections versus five sections? I'm not sure if you want to explain that any further, but it gives the building a full five sections across the board. So not only are we meeting the needs of growing the early learning center, providing opportunities to grow, but we have also taken care of making sure that the elementary school conserve populations where maybe the student count wants to be a little bit smaller, or maybe there's opportunity where there's growth down the road that does it. But this would become a room that would potentially, if we don't need a full five sections, this room right here could then become the library expansion if, you know, in the short term, but it's felt that we don't need all those classroom spaces. So it kind of ran through it fast. What was it, two-year process to get to option six? But like I said, today, we sat down, we went through it, and we really spent a lot of time with Nina and Cheryl and John and myself, having a conversation about, "How do we keep dialing this thing down to a manageable budget number? A budget number that keeps changing with regard to, you know, the outlook of where the economy is and all the other challenges we have with regard to supply chain and material costs and things of that nature? Trying to continue to dial that in and make sure it's workable? Put all of the pieces where they need to be, so that, like I said, how do we put all the first grade together? How do we put Montessori together? How do we put all the early learning center program components together?" Conversation was always, "This might be the most logical location." But we have done four options, trying to put the addition here. And each time we put the addition in that location, it compromises how the building functions to a large degree. It always ended up being the albatross of having programs kind of leapfrog different areas of the buildings, so that you ended up with, you know, three first grade and two first grade, and so on and so forth, and other programs moving through each other and causing one of the challenges that we were talking about today was just the issue of noise, is all the kids are moving through programs and around programs. There's a lot of hallway noise and a lot of hallway congestion just because of the fact that so many kids are moving and trying to get to where they want to be. So bringing art and music to this side is a big plus. Keeping clubhouse up here is a big plus. And so I think we've resolved a lot of issues. Is it perfect? Not necessarily. But is it a whole lot better than the building is today from the operations and maintenance perspective? Yes. From an early learning center perspective, I think the answer is yes. From a elementary perspective, yes, because we have addressed our four biggest concerns that, you know, really led us to look at this as a viable option in the first place.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So is that red dotted line, is that... No, the red dotted line before, yep, is that?
The end of the building is right here.
Okay.
This red dotted line, I was looking at it as a fire separation wall that would basically terminate where one building starts and one stops, because we need to try to look at, "How do we control?" Maybe, maybe the state might come in and say, "You need to sprinkle the whole building." And we might be able to say, "Well, maybe this is a location for a firewall right here so that we can, we can kind of keep that separate and only sprinkle a part of the building instead of the whole building."
Okay, so that's where, like, at the end, I'm just trying to even picture where it all is. So that's where the building ends now.
Yep.
So you're going out into the existing parking lot.
Correct.
And then moving that drive over, or just driving, moving that drive over to the edge of the parking lot?
Yep, moving the drive all the way over to what is currently the backside edge of the parking lot.
Okay.
And then parking is now being accommodated up here. So this right here will become parent drop-off and pickup and visitor parking and things of that nature. Bus will come across the front with staff parking down here. And again, what we're looking to do is separate the two so that we're trying to limit the amount of congestion. This right here can be quite congested, especially when you have parents going in here. Parents backing up is far worse than having hopefully staff backing up, where they're hopefully a little bit more aware of what's going on. But by separating the two, I think we address a number of site issues that we've talked about for a while. I don't know, Cheryl, if you want to touch on that.
Basically, right now, we have pickup in the back, but not that big a space, and we do have parents that have to back up.
Yep.
The front is where we, where the kids hold for buses, and that's beautiful. We can actually deliver every child to their bus.
So with the opportunities for expansion between options four, five, and six, are they pretty much equal?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, so in this case, we have future expansion up here. Here, you've already kind of built in your future capacity by saying you're at five sections, so you've got, you had a little bit of room for growth there. And this is probably the program that you would see the most pressure in the future. In the other option, we had an addition here with future growth in this area. So it was kind of one versus.
Yeah, I see four, five, and six have different remodel areas. I was just wondering about the opportunity for growth.
Yep.
They're pretty much equal. Okay.
Maybe we can hit on budget. Are we quick?
Yeah.
You have more to go.
Nope, if you want to touch, touch on the budget.
Well, then we'll probably go back and then just add to what Troy's saying, you know, then trying to predict what the economy is in a year and a half from now. And the price range is quite a bit, but I think, not I think, I know a big part of the discussion tonight is question two or not for the referendum. And if you remember, in the survey, it was a $7 million number, but it was an early childhood question, right? This is a lot more than early childhood, so that's up for discussion. And when we were meeting today, could we just, I'd hate to put plop on in early childhood, but the comment was made, you know, "That's half-baked." Used a different name, but, you know. So is that the right thing to do? Hence why option six was created tonight, because we're getting into a neighborhood of some big numbers here. I mean, that's a big number, too, right? So I just wanted to add, there's going to be discussion. Again, it's going off different than what the survey said, but this is more than early childhood, so I wanted to add that is a discussion tonight as you make a decision with one question and then two. But there's more questions about the budget, I certainly can answer those. But it includes a lot of things, like the site work Troy was just talking about, electrical service that we were just talking about, and then the, you know, I added, you know, significant amount of remodel. It's not just an addition anymore, so hence the dollars. If there's any questions on that.
So this number got to be, you know, probably bigger than we were originally looking at, but the scope of the project is much bigger, right? I mean, there's a lot of upgrades at the elementary school that maybe weren't planned or talked about in just a early childhood area, right? So would any of this number here, would we be able to cover any of that, you know, maybe eight and a half, 8.75, somewhere in there, with, from like the 30 million-ish number we were looking at?
Well, the deferred maintenance number is 35. That's what we had talked about. That's what we had surveyed. I'm not the expert on maintenance budgets. Is there money in there that's not priority one? I couldn't begin to say that, though we have to remember, we have overestimated likely at our interest rate between 3.25 and 3.75, and that could be less. That gives you some flexibility. How much, I couldn't say for certain. Is it 8.5 flexibility? I would say probably not. But it's a matter of the opportunity cost. If you do much or all of an 8.5, what don't you do that's a priority one? The priority ones get right out towards that 35 mark. Whatever you do, what don't you do, I guess, is the question. But it certainly wouldn't all fit in the 35 million. And further, there's something to be said for, we asked about 35 million for these specific items, and folks were generally supportive, to change what your target is and what you're going to spend that money on? Do you have folks that then are scared away from it and that the appearance is that you weren't straightforward with them? That could be, but I can't speak to the psychology of the voter.
I mean, and maybe the direction maybe you're going to is if you ask the $7 million second question, we have a million dollar, million and a half in reserve.
Sure.
To get this done. I mean, that's another way to look. I'm not taking you or don't, but that's another way to look at it. The other thing, though, I think when you go to a referendum, if you decide to do a second question, you wouldn't just be, "It's early childhood, please vote yes," because there's so many other things, improvements to the elementary school, which should be part of the message.
Right.
Taken well and not, I'm not sure, but there's a lot more getting done than...
Yes, I would agree. This, to me, this 8.5 number looks probably bigger than what we maybe originally looked at, but it's a lot, in my mind, it's a lot more...
Valuable.
...project than just adding space for early childhood. I mean, a lot of these things, I think, at the elementary school, it would seem like maybe over half of that number, if not three-quarters is...
You took words right out of my mouth. So we're only doing the early childhood part, looking at the square footages that Troy showed you earlier. I mean, we're much less than 7 million. We're probably in that 5 million range. Doing quick math in my head.
Right.
But then it doesn't, there's this domino effect that doesn't, the building doesn't work well anymore. So you're correct, there's a lot more getting done.
So when it says Montessori and secured entrance addition, 500 square feet, I see the, like, the entrance, I'm assuming, is up here where it says main entry. Where does, where does the Montessori part come in?
The Montessori is right here, and it's moving some plumbing around and things like that, and then this is the security.
Okay, because these are all the otherwise Montessoris in the, the current kindergarten wing, right?
Right. Yep. Yep. And that was a, that was a large part of the conversation, is, you know, how can we move the pieces around without spending a lot of money? You know, so you're looking at down here, you know, we're moving into this area, we're doing very little. We're taking this over for the early learning center. Realistically, we're doing very little, you know, when it comes to the actual cost, other than the fact that they're gaining two spaces, right? And then you look at down here, the elementary school is gaining four classrooms. So, you know, the elementary school's gaining four classrooms, the early learning center's gaining two, with the possible expansion in the future up here. You've got a new secured entry for both facilities, right? So now you've got one secured entry that's shared by your early learning center and your elementary. And then, you know, the office in this renovation here is probably a good chunk of, it's the cost of this and the cost of this. That's where the dollars are.
And we're gaining classrooms...
Yep.
...by how? By renovating or by taking off pressure that was, they were used before and now moving the clubhouse? Or how is that happening to gain the classrooms?
We're gaining these classrooms right here. This is the addition. So everything to this side of my hand is new addition. And so these rooms are essentially new. There's more rooms here, obviously, than just the four, but we are adding and giving up two classrooms here for the early learning center. We've got a little bit more in terms of special education, storage, storage is a big thing, and the Title I. We've got just a little bit of stuff here and there that just takes space, right? So we're just kind of giving the building a little bit, breathing room might be a good term, but...
So currently, Cheryl, we have 22 sections of classroom space. This will give us 24, 24 more, 26? This will give us twenty-four, twenty-four more, twenty-six. I always give us two. Yeah.
So we're gaining six rooms total.
Okay, so, so do we have, I mean, with enrollment down and kind of staying at the downward, are we going to use all five classrooms at each grade level?
So really, we're four, we're gaining four, right?
Two and nearly yet.
And so the conversation that I had, once upon a time, Lee Elementary School was a seven-section school, and that's all changed. We're now, you know, we're anywhere from four to six sections. And I think, you know, to look forward, I can't imagine that anybody's not going to grow. And so we think you have to plan, what we talked about was a five-section, five-section all the way around, but it used to be seven.
We also have to think about this in a different way, because it's not just about classroom space where you have classroom teacher and eighteen kids. What we do in education now and what the elementary does in regards to the instruction of kids in a pull-out environment where you're pulling out groups of kids uses every single nook and cranny that the elementary has now and could use more, because we don't do it in the traditional way we did it twenty years ago. We're using spaces in very unique ways because of the unique population and needs of our kids. And that population's not going to get any more normalized over the course of the next twenty years.
Well, and I guess, Cheryl, that's exactly where I'm going, kind of with this, is when we're looking at, are we using that in the best possible ways in a classroom that's designated particularly for a four K, a K? Or when we look at putting this kind of dollar amount out there, when we look at the needs of this district, and it isn't really necessarily enrollment and growing, but when we're looking at the needs, just like you said, they're very specialized needs, and we're talking about daycare or extra classrooms versus a special education need and needs for behavioral and emotional.
Correct.
I think, I guess, when we have to look at money in eight point five million dollars, where are we going to get the most bang for that eight-five, eight point five million dollars? It's certainly more palatable to spend eight and a half million dollars to do a large project to get a lot more benefit to a taxpayer than it is seven million dollars just for a daycare, in my mind.
Right.
So, and then, of course, renovations that need to be done too. But then if that's where we're going to go with that, then I want to, I want to explore then that level of how is that going to be used?
Right.
In a, in a, in a age that we need.
I think to speak to your, I think to speak to your point, Cheryl, I think this slide right here, the, the fourth or fifth slide in, the, the pre-K through grade two slide of four points, and Troy mentioned this, you addressed all four of those points. That's your roadmap of how we address need in the elementary, because you're addressing, really, in my mind, four big things. You're addressing the needs of the clubhouse by adding classrooms, you're addressing needs of the elementary by adding those other rooms that you could use for many other things. You're addressing the safety and security issue, and you're addressing the framework of the building from a mechanical and electrical systems standpoint. And let us not forget, the elementary was built in nineteen sixty-seven. The mechanical and electrical systems at capacity, I think, is probably putting it nicely, because at capacity, but in some ways probably failed or failing.
And George did the mechanical upgrade this, this summer, which is kind of huge help. But, you know, we still will need to do a mechanical mezzanine at one end, you know, to accommodate air handling units and things like that.
It's fifty-four years old.
It's fifty-four years old.
Well, I was kind of wondering if that's kind of where Dale was going with that, is that we had that tier of that thirty-five million that we're asking for now, which was the huge needs, but are some of these needs that we're talking about now being addressed in those level two or three, is that, was that? Or even level one, or even level one, because there was. Well, the level was, it was in the, that thirty-five million, I guess, is that, that's what we're asking for, was those level one needs, but we're.
Sure, but remember, of the level one needs, not all of that was high school. Twenty-six million of that thirty-five million was high school. Some of this is level one.
Right.
Much of this is level one at the elementary. It's just not as sizable and as visible and as egregious in so many ways as what the high school is.
That was already being accommodated.
It's already in level one. The mechanical and electrical systems needs of the elementary is already in a level one.
Right, so that's what I'm saying. So is some of this still, is some of this trickled down into that level two tier that we had identified, or not?
I think the electrical was level two, George.
Yep.
Okay.
So hot water in the classrooms was a one.
Site work was two.
Updating the bathrooms over there to handicap accessible.
Okay, so that's what I thought. So we are addressing then more of those multiple concerns that we had further down the line with this.
Yep, absolutely, absolutely.
In my mind, the thirty-five million, I think, what'd you say, twenty-six was at the high school.
Twenty-six point seven, I think, is the number.
Um, okay, so that leaves about eight to nine for other buildings.
Yes.
Of which that eight to nine, we had maybe a couple, two million-ish, somewhere in there earmarked towards the elementary school, right?
Maybe, maybe even more than that, because.
Okay, so two to three million earmarked for the elementary. And so could, I mean, could we kind of look at it as maybe part of that eight point five really would be covered by maybe two to three million from the thirty-five million? So that eight point five kind of comes down to maybe five point five.
And I think that's where you're getting at, right?
Yep, I think that's exactly what you're getting at.
That's, you know, so eight point five is a big number, which, or bigger maybe than what we were originally.
But I don't know that it is, because when we were talking on the survey, you're asking for seven million just to address the single need that is childcare. And yes, that's certainly a, 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 a need, but this addresses that and so much more.
Yeah, right, so, so that, I guess, is probably kind of where I'm trying to go is that, while eight point five is bigger, you know, than the seven, it's in reality, the, kind of the number we were, our number maybe isn't as big as eight point five because we had.
It's probably not.
Three million kind of earmarked that way.
Already doesn't mean anything.
Correct.
I think that's where we were going with that.
Well, and maybe, I mean, a really big chunk of that money was working over there, but there was some flooring that needed to be done, some cabinets, some media center cabinet improvements. Now, could we reprioritize things and, and we need sometimes, you know, this is the blue light special talk now. If you do that, seven point eight or seven point nine million, so you're in the seven range, knowing that we've got to figure out the delta, you know, that's easier to solve than a million or two. That's just an idea, and there may be, there's some overlap here of what we had in the deferred maintenance list, where what we're going to remodel, so that could help.
Certainly.
We still have a lot of work to do after referendum passes, making the budgets work, but.
Sure, certainly the heavy preponderance of the work is the high school. This is no surprise, this is beating a dead horse we've been talking about for six months, but there is still, you know, a quarter of that thirty-five million was still devoted to the other buildings. Not much here, there's really not much. The entryway's got some issues. There's some issues going on at the middle school, that building is twenty-nine years old. But second tier, if not one A, is elementary in association with that clubhouse, certainly. And the other item, I, I say this, there's no deferred maintenance list that has a priority for safety and security. That's just above the list altogether. And it, we built this building in a, in a time and a place where safety and security looked nothing like it looks now. We didn't have childcare at the elementary, and there is a safety and security issue that goes with childcare in elementary. That's a whole nother level, and this would address that.
Oh, I guess, so going to that then, that secured lobby that's there, and then you'd have the admin office right there next to that.
You looking at option six?
I, yes, yeah, I mean, that kind of seems to be the working one number.
It does.
Right?
We have the early learning center administration on one side of the lobby and the elementary on the other.
And then the secured doors, that would be like the same as we're, we're looking at it like the high school buzz-in system and.
It's just a, I mean, I can't, I don't want to speak for Nina, she lives at each and every day. The entry and exit for the clubhouse, to, to, to say that that's a safe, secure entryway, that'd be a stretch. I mean, it's just not the way it's located, the way it's accessed, it's just not. This would be much different.
This addresses both.
It does, it does.
Would you have an additional door even going into the early childhood? You know what I mean? Like, after you got into your first doors, you could have another door there? If you don't want children wandering over there, you know, elementary-age children, or?
Well, you're, you're, you're really, you're going in a door, you're going right or you're going left.
Right.
And that's declaring who you are in so many ways.
Yeah.
I mean, you're going one spot or the other.
Yeah.
And all those iterations, you know, early on before option six, really got to the point where, you know, we put something up here and it's like, well, we still have challenges with regard to, you know, blending the two programs and kids wandering all over and the issue and challenge of noise. And, and so, you know, we kept moving it back up here, even though it seemed like the, the most economical option for an addition might be right here, but it just doesn't work programmatically with what you're trying to do inside the building.
And that would be where, that secured lobby would also be where parents would come in then to pick up for elementary kids after school.
Yep, this one, the number one with the star, I'm assuming that means parking lot?
Yep.
Yep.
So you're entering there to either get your kids from clubhouse or get your kids from elementary and.
Yep.
And we all, I think we all know, if we've traveled the elementary or the campus for that matter, seven-thirty, eight o'clock, and three fifteen to three thirty. I mean, the elementary's a zoo, I mean, with pickup and drop off, and we've done everything we can under the sun to make it happen. Maybe this helps some, solves some of those issues too.
And so then the bus loading would be back to the front like it was years ago and.
It is right now.
And it is again, right?
Yeah, it is now.
And then it would just be staff parking?
Sure, what we, what we have done, we're pretty adamant now and pretty set. Again, I don't want to speak for Cheryl, but I think I am going to be safe in saying that loading the buses at the end of the day in the front is glorious. Because staff are literally walking kids to the bus they ride, which is, couldn't be safer. They're literally dropping them off every single day on their bus. So we would continue that, certainly.
So then, what do we talk about? Two additional classrooms for the early learning center for Nina. So how do we get, how do we do two more classrooms with the same number of staff? How does that work?
Um, because our, the rooms we have right now aren't big enough for us to max out the ratio sizes, because it's based on square footage. So as soon as I can separate, because you know, I have the ones, ones are on one side, twos are on the other, in a shared classroom.
Okay.
So they'll each have their own room. So they'll still be the same staff working those rooms, but now I can actually max out the group sizes.
Okay, so how many kids do you have in, like, each of those, like, in the ones and the twos? How many kids now do you have in each?
Well, we have the information that you provided me when I presented to the AEDC, and Becky's got that PowerPoint here, she's going to queue that up. And these numbers are approximately a month old, but you'll see the overages in numbers, they are not exact. They probably have gotten worse since, as in the waiting list has gotten longer, but here are, here are the numbers coming up.
Those are my staff.
There's sixteen under the age of two in two classrooms.
See, and so that's what I have right now. So at age two and a half, I can, right now, I can only have, because of the size of my room, eight kids. I can go up to twelve with the same number of staff.
Okay, so that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
So, so we go from eight to twelve.
From eight to twelve. Same thing, so that's for my two-year-olds. My three-year-olds, I have one staff right now, but I only have enough space for eight in the classroom. I can go up to ten. I'm at age four, I can go up to thirteen kids.
And how many?
With one staff.
Ten right now. Ten right now, okay. And then, okay, so we're gaining four, two, three, you're gaining ten kids total.
And if I add just one more staff person to my four-year-old room, I can double my number to twenty.
Okay, so with one more staff.
And if I do a mixed age group of three and four-year-olds right now, I can only max.
You can go to twenty-six, is that what you're telling, because you said you have ten now.
Ten, oh, no, of my four-year-olds, I have ten, I can go to twenty.
You can go to twenty, so you can't quite double, you can go to double.
Yeah, and, but with, if I do a mixed age group of three and four-year-olds with two staff, I can go from ten to seventeen. Four eighteen, ten something, I have more fours than threes.
So what you're saying is with greater square footage, you can add more staff, thereby add more kids?
Yeah, well, and I can add more kids right away.
Add more kids without adding more staff. You can add more kids, but you're going to get the biggest buck if you, the biggest bang for that square footage is if you add another staff member.
Especially with my older age group, because that's where we're really getting hit right now, is we just, I can't add more. Because that's where the numbers get grilled, kind of exponentially. I mean, I can go from ten to twenty. That's ten with just one more person.
Okay.
So.
And do we feel that we can get and retain another?
Well, let's look at, I think we have waiting list numbers here coming up.
Oh, I think I can get the kids, no problem.
No, another staff.
The kids is the problem.
That's what I asked, staff. Can we get and retain staff?
Well, that's the next, that's the question of the day, but I believe, yes, with a change to support staff salary schedule, which we're literally in the process of doing. I'm meeting with them tomorrow, as a matter of fact. Yeah, that's a huge issue. Turnover, retaining and keeping are big issues in all employee groups.
And so, and do you think that just the salary is the issue?
I don't, I couldn't say that.
Honestly, the part of the issue is our small class sizes and literally having two classrooms in the same space, because what are you guys doing up there with your kids? And what's going on over here? And why, your kids are waking up my kids from nap, and, I mean, honestly, that's staff, it's really hard.
I think the environment in combination with an increase in pay, which we were planning to do a better part of a year and a half ago, not for clubhouse, but for all support staff folks, I think would be a game changer. Can, can I say that that would allow us to hire and retain all staff? I could never begin to say that. I think we've got work shortage issues across the country that are indicative of what we're experiencing here. We're no different. It's certainly going to help having an improved environment and having a better wage.
And do we, so we're licensed, obviously, for daycare, and then do we take county assistance for, okay.
And I'm in the process now of working on, so Young Star has changed how they deliver micro grants, and DCF has changed things on how they're delivering money to help build up childcare right now. They have a program for eighteen months that they're funding right now, which will help. We'll have money coming in already applied to the grants, or they're called payment programs. I'll find out Friday if I receive those funds to help boost staff, pay, to pay for, if we need extra, if we do get the extra rooms, it would pay for furnishings in the room. That wouldn't have to come out of budgetary money. And then I, we are looking to be a four-star program. We start with our first observation from the Young Star Technical Consultants next Thursday. So, and with that should come more money through Wisconsin Shares and from Young Star, which would then go to help.
Sure, there's another X factor here of the infrastructure bill. If that becomes a reality, that could be a game changer too.
I guess, that's what I was going to ask, and ask is, like, how much is it going to cost to, yeah, furnish and do all that stuff?
We have some assistance, and the infrastructure bill, I think, would provide other forms of assistance if that becomes a reality.
And we just received some money through these payment programs this last year, and we've updated all of our classrooms. And we have new rugs, new cabinets, everything, we're just moving on.
And how are meals currently provided then? Is that, do they go to the cafeteria to eat, or they, is that brought in? And is that, is that money included in their weekly rate, or, okay?
Right, but right now.
So we don't bill separately for meals?
No, and right now, it's because the USDA is doing free meals.
Yep.
Yeah, so we're not, but before that, we would be billed each month from nutrition, and we would, you know, that money would be transferred out, but yeah, we didn't bill parents separately.
Okay.
Other items, other conversations.
This is changing the subject maybe, but on the four K, well, on the addition, is that why it says the A there is, this is?
Addition.
Okay, that's just those, the additional classrooms, okay, that's what I was wondering. And then there is a red seven over here that I, next to the blue two.
That's a key for John for estimating in my narrative notes.
Oh, okay.
Very observant, though, clearly.
And this green space, that green space in the middle, is that where you were saying that maybe something might be, but you haven't decided yet kind of thing?
We talked about pullout space for, for kids who might need additional support for learning. It's also a spot where we're probably going to need to address bathrooms. And we were talking about that earlier, that toileting in that area will be a big deal, so we're probably going to need to, to put toilets in that area also.
I, I know it's not where everyone lives their days in regards to understanding what's happening in an elementary school, let alone all of the other buildings in any district, but the, the shape and size, sort of speak, of what we do with kids has never been more different and more varied and more diverse. We, we don't have cookie cutter solutions with all kids are the same when they show up in any classroom of seventeen. There are so many. There are so many things that are being done where kids are educated in a different way with other support staff to be able to make that happen. That simply can't happen right now. I drop my son off every day in Montessori in the first, second and third grade. And there's a para that works with those Montessori teachers where all of her things and all of the stuff she does in the hallway, cause there's no spot to put them. And if someone's going to receive assistance outside of that classroom, where is that occurring? In the hallway. And that's happening all over the building, cause there isn't space to put them. Because every single nook and cranny is full. We, just like everybody else, if they're doing it right, aren't educating kids in the same way we did twenty years ago. Kids aren't the same as they were twenty years ago. It looks a lot different now. And the elementary is a very progressive place. They're doing it the way that we're supposed to be doing it, but that requires staff and space to be able to make it happen. This, this might be a part of the solution to that. There isn't, there isn't any way to know for certain, but I think this would be a significant step in the right direction if that's the direction we all decide to go here.
There's a lot of flexibility, um, in the elementary program for Cheryl. Uh, you know, she's still grappling with lots of things, um, you know, in terms of if this is the exact right space for this program or that program, but overall, there's a lot of flexibility here. And I've done work all across the country and probably one of the, one of the most exciting programs I worked with was actually in Williston when they had their big room for the oil. And we were doing, um, four classrooms that were open classrooms, but they were multi-age. And it was huge, the kids were catching up like no tomorrow. Um, it was loud, it was active, we had, um, for four classrooms, there were eight teachers. Um, and, and they were seeing huge results and it stopped because of why? Parents. Parents saying, well, I understand that my child is with this group now, well, that's because a child from, you know, from Colorado isn't the same level as a child from Washington State or this, that or the other thing. So they were using a large group of those things, e- even in the middle school to try to do catch-up and things like that. And at the elementary school, that's really where it's most important because, you know, kids are coming in and it's so varied where they are. Um, and even when they come back from summer break, I'm sure Cheryl and your team are, are struggling to see which kids have fallen behind a little bit, which might have, you know, moved forward. And how do you provide that, you know, support?
Sure, we're also on a place in time where our kids that are entering the elementary school missed five months of instruction. And, and the needs never have been bigger. The learning loss across the nation is some ten to fifteen percent in the areas of English, Language Arts and Math where they're assessed. We're no different. We've got a drop-off specifically in English, Language Arts in the elementary. Those needs come with, we need resource, you need staff in order to do direct instruction to get them back where they need to be. That requires doing things somewhat different than we've done them before.
Programmatically, this building's set up pretty good, um, you know, for, for pullouts and catch-up and all of that. You know, the middle school is a bit of a challenge, um, but, you know, I think there, it's just the rigidity of what that, what that building is. But, you know, I think, taking a look at this and saying, you know, back to the original question, if we spend money on a, on a standalone early childhood center versus taking money and saying, we're going to make improvements for, you know, the early learning center infants all the way to, um, you know, the Montessori grade three, you know, this is, this is huge in terms of stretching those dollars well beyond what was talked about as we're just going to take care of daycare.
So what it boils down to, there aren't any decisions and actions and motions being taken here this evening. This is informational, what it boils down to really is one or two questions. I don't know that there's a lot of salesmanship that needs to be done yet on the high school situation. If there are those out there that have questions, we would gladly give you a tour. At the end of that tour, you'll probably be convinced that there are some issues. Um, so it's a matter of, do you rope this into that one question or do you have this as a second question? And that's certainly not something you're going to decide here this evening, but that really is in, in the long and the short of it, what it boils down to. Um, to increase that price tag certainly comes with some hesitation because it's a lot of money. We get that. But now, and this is the, the approach that I've been taking all along, we are now in a position to make an investment in our future as a place that provides education. And we are in a position to be able to do that because we have been responsible for a long time. And we have very little debt and we provide great service. But when you have very little debt, you often are in a position where you need to go ahead and make a decision about how you're going to invest in the future. This is a way that we can invest in the future and that's what stands before us. I, I don't want to give the indication that no further comments are needed, but we'll have that conversation again on the twentieth. And no decision for referendum occurs until we get to January, so there's time yet. But the twentieth's a big meeting on that conversation, but for me, this was, that stripped this item out of the rest of a board meeting, cause it's, it needs to have its own day to make, to do it right. Cause the board meeting's got so many other things going on. So that's the purpose of doing it here this evening and I, there, I think there are some great options on the table. But by no means do I want to say no more comments. You certainly can chime in with questions and comments if you want.
You're waiting for me to say something, ain't ya?
Yeah, 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 you keep looking like you're going to say something. Anyway.
Well, the worst, the worst thing to do, and, and I used to sell stuff, is to, or buy stuff. If you buy something cheap and you expect something out of it and it doesn't perform, you didn't get a deal. If you pay upfront for something and it performs and meets your needs, then you got a deal. And it, and that's the way you look at it. And so, you know, I appreciate you guys planning and working with this because ultimately, yeah, it's, it's more money, but is it doing the better thing for that building and the needs that we have there? That's what we got to keep looking at. Um, whether the taxpayers want that, um, it's, it's an approach that we'll have to try and make. As to, uh, plan for it and see if this is around to do it, if it's next year or whatever, or tie it in with the one we've got, you know? And I, I, I agree with Dale there too, you know? Uh, let's, let's go through the thirty-five million kind of with a fine-tooth comb and see if there's some overlap and if there's some things there that, uh, you know, we can combine the two a little bit and, and make the, the swallowing a little easier.
Yeah, we've, we've been doing that, I mean, John and I and, and George, we've been, we've been combing and combing and combing. And, you know, if you were to address all of the academic and all of the deferred maintenance needs, I think we were over a hundred million. So, you know, to pull it back, you know, it's painful because people say, well, we're not getting this and we're not getting this, but at the end of the day, if this is where we think that, what really needs to be done, right? And the, the building maintenance is such a high priority here at so many levels, um, before things really start to exponentially go downhill. Um, you know, there's always time to go back and say, well, now let's go back and, and move a wall here or there to improve program. But if the walls are falling down and you don't have options to move walls, you know, that, that's part of what you're running into in some areas of the building. So, so to get to a point where, you know, we went out with a survey and said, what, what are you willing to support and to get it down to forty million, forty-two million, whatever that sweet number is, you know, I, you know, for the, for the community to know that, you know, when this building was built, um, you know, it was ten years before I graduated from high school and, you know, when I graduated from high school, we had four computers in the building for students to use. And, you know, granted, technology's gotten smaller, but the way you teach it has dramatically changed. And that's just one example. Now you start looking at vocational programs and this, that and the other thing. You'll always be looking to improve, right? And it's, um, you know, the only, the only constant is we just keep getting older. But, you know, to find ways to do things better or improve it is, uh, is always the constant battle. And how do you pay for it? How do you, how do you accommodate change is, is, is really a challenge. And hopefully with this building and this plan, as we continue to, to push and pull, you've seen the iterations, you know, with six options over the amount of time we spent, still leaving space for future growth, still trying to think about, um, you know, projects like renovating a media center and things like that, you know? Those are still things that are going to need to be done down the road, but to try to keep this a palatable number, um, you know, and provide, like you were saying, keep that, just getting a sense that, man, we're getting real value for that money that's not going to be thrown down the tube if we, if we have to do the next step and the next step and the next step. You know, these are real, real things that I think are going to benefit both programs long-term and, and thus the community, so.
And again, think of the value, the four questions. It's safer and secure, it's the social, emotional and academic well-being needs of kids and the staff that serve them. You're fixing a building that's fifty-four years old and we're addressing a childcare for nearly the same number as the survey question for just childcare. And some of it is already roped into the thirty-five million. I'm not here to make that decision, that's obviously all of you that need to make that decision. But this is doable. This is realistic. And this isn't exorbitant and asking too much. And the reason I say that is because it's an investment in our future as a community and as a school system. And above all things, it's an investment in our kids, cause this does great things for kids.
Yeah, I think it's just a lot more palatable as a taxpayer to seven, seven million dollars for a standalone or a addition or a whatever, just for childcare, when it's really the school's responsibility and business, if you want, for, for lack of a word, to the taxpayers. And, and what we owe the taxpayers is education first. Um, it's a wonderful service, it's a wonderful thing that we provide also to have that daycare in addition. Um, but this really helps us hit the mark, I think, on both of those is running a, a service, um, to the community for daycare, but also the investment in the business that we're taxed to do for the taxpayers. In my mind, this would be, for me, this is a way better option. Um, the numbers, we, obviously I would still feel more comfortable working out, but a better option, a bigger bang for the buck, um, addresses so many more things than just a seven million dollar daycare center, but we're really just, that's not our business.
Not our primary business by any means.
So when, when do we kind of have that discussion of one question versus two questions?
I think you have that discussion, you've had it some here this evening.
Yeah.
On December twentieth and we meet next as a board, it's already on the agenda.
Is there like, I don't know if you, who do we ask as far as like, could give us kind of an expert opinion as to whether one question would look, you know, sound better or less?
Baird Financial is who we ask and we've already had that conversation. Uh, it, it's never one question's better or worse than two questions, it's a matter of what the questions are and how your community feels about the questions that have been offered to them in community survey. And remember from our, our results session from a few weeks back, our community was pretty strongly supportive of addressing our deferred maintenance needs. These are deferred maintenance needs by and large and nothing's changed about that. So that's one question, if you want to strip this out and make this a secondary item. It, to me, sounds off to be a secondary item, cause the secondary item would just be for another operation, another outfit, another building, another thing like childcare is. Well, childcare is part and personal to what we do, so in my mind, it makes more sense to be one question. But that's a decision that you would all make on the twentieth. Baird Financial, when I run this past them, and I'll do so tomorrow, my estimation, I can't predict what Lisa Voison from Baird would say, but based on the description we have here this evening, my, my hunch is she would probably say one makes more sense than two. But I don't know what she'll say for sure.
See, and I have a different opinion about that as, like, you know, when you were, when Dale had asked the question and we were talking about money and dollars and you said, but we've asked a question and now in the taxpayer's mind, you're, you're going to do something different? And I would feel like people who don't regularly watch our board meetings or know and then, or don't attend our community sessions, they were asked in very specific, um, parts in the survey itself and we saw a resounding support for the deferred maintenance. Yes, this is part of deferred maintenance, but now it's more money, considerable amount of more money than what we had originally asked. And I just, I feel like that would be like, the community at large would feel it was a bait and switch to like, okay, well, now, now they're asking for a lot more. And that's just the way I would, like, we, we were talking about thirty-five and now we're talking about forty.
But what if you're still asking for thirty-five?
Well, not really, maybe if you're going to add this, I mean?
You might be. If you are reprioritizing some of those ones, which was what we would have to put pen to paper to do.
I think we already just talked about that and that's just, we don't have eight and a half million to, to do that, right? I mean, that's, we're not doing, I mean, you're not getting close.
No.
No, so that you're, you're literally asking, if, if, at best, you're asking for probably six million dollars more than five, five to six million dollars more.
Yeah, and so to add, I agree with what you're saying. I mean, when you went to the survey and you said thirty-five million and you got great support, stay there.
Yeah.
Which is twenty-six years of doing this, okay, hey, just stay there. And I'm back to the early childhood, if it's a second question, and then I'll come full circle to where Sean was going, but, you know, the early childhood was a forty-two percent, right? Did we get that right?
What was the number you're quoting? The yes, no, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
It was a definite yes, twenty-one percent.
Oh, yep.
Definitely yes, twenty-one percent.
Yes.
And so on that second question, we want to be careful too and make sure we talk about other maintenance, other childhood rules. Cause if it was just purely early childhood and let's say we were doing a four, five or six, four, five, six, I would, and I think Baird would agree with me, don't ask. Cause it didn't test well, like the pool.
Right.
Didn't test well.
Right.
So if we go for, in my opinion, this is my opinion and Lisa Voison's awesome, she's been doing it longer than I have. Um, you know, stick with the plan. But if you ask it, even that second question, the first question, because they'll say, we told you. Why are you even asking?
Right.
So you've got to make sure the message is about this, not early childhood.
Right.
I would say, I mean, in my mind, I really like this, I like the creativity that you guys came up with and, um, it, it gives us options down the road and I think it's a great plan, great value. But I'd be a little concerned, you know, we had, I think, very good support for thirty-five million. And then if we come and say, well, we changed our mind and now we want to go to forty million, I, I just, I, I, I think some people, some community members would, would question that.
I'm not interested in recommending changing the number or anything other than thirty-five million.
I would hate to jeopardize our support for thirty-five.
Right, and I think the only way that you don't change that number is that you have to have two then separate questions.
If, if you can't make this as part of the thirty-five, you are correct.
Yes.
Unless you have another, sure, unless there's another funding source, which is a whole other conversation.
To cut five or six million dollars out of high school to afford some of this work, then, you know, there's a lot of things that wouldn't get done. The mechanical system alone is chewing up most of that money.
Right.
So, so it'd be tough to do, possible, of course. If that was the direction and we, we could bring a plan back, but I don't think that's what you want to do. Cause those needs aren't going to go away, right?
Right.
You're going to have five years later going, well, remember that five, six million dollars we cut out of high school, now we got to do it, so.
But if you look at our survey question, I'll read it, it says, would you support expanding a referendum to build an early childhood center? And that one had fifty-four percent yes, thirty-three no, um, thirteen percent undecided. So that's kind of like right in the middle. And there we didn't ask about separating them, we asked about expanding that referendum to include a childhood center, so.
I guess that's, and that's, that's, I guess, that key, that's a really good point that you're making. I think you're probably on the other version of it, looking at it. I'm looking at the other version of it, where you're saying, well, yeah, we asked about expanding and, but yeah, we asked about expanding and we didn't get the support about expanding that we did for the initial.
Yes, yes.
And I, I think we'd have to be very, very careful about.
Yes, yeah.
Um, and even if we ended up with Sean with other sources of that, where, let's not think of that then that we're going to have to trim, let's think about if we're ending up with more money, then what else can we do with that money in order to then expand on some of those emotional, behavioral, um, services that we desperately need? So instead of trying to trim here with money that we're going to get here, let's look at that money seriously and think, how can we make that better? Without costing the taxpayers more money in addition.
Sure.
Cause I don't think that really like, just that money that you're going to get off of those additional sources is going to trim this enough to make a difference from somebody saying one way or the other, like, well, if we're get, I don't know, let's throw a hundred fifty thousand or two hundred, that's not going to trim enough to say, sure, I'd, I'd support it for that, but not for, you know, for two hundred thousand less. If you're talking millions, I don't think that's enough.
It's certainly cleaner, just to use that word, to say, we're asking you for thirty-five million, we've surveyed you about it, we've told you about it, here are the items, they're on the list, they're still on the list, they're not going away, thirty-five million, done. And then to ask if you're going to a second question that involves these details, that's cleaner, cause number one hasn't changed a, a bit then at that point. Certainly an easier sales job. Certainly an easier sales job, if you will, though I'm not so sure that folks really are clamoring to be sold. It seems folks are like, yeah, that makes sense. It's fifty years old. I get it.
Yeah.
Yep.
This community is always showing great support for
I have.
Education and how that, you know, the dollars that we're gonna spend in the education. And I think what you're, this is a very good plan to make that way more palatable and way more effective for our, for what our business is here and for our taxpayers that really do feel invested in the education component, but maybe not so invested in our daycare component, but yet you're still getting some of that.
Well, and honestly, with this plan, the daycare is probably what's gonna cost the least. We're literally just going into rooms that are already there.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think if, if the community saw this plan here that we just saw tonight, right, for the first time, I think a lot of the members of the community would support this. This is um, it's, it, this is, I think, above and beyond daycare, childcare.
Way, way better, way better in my mind, way better.
Yeah, way better.
Where's your cost? Your eight point five, I'm assuming that a majority of that cost is coming from your plumbing and electrical needs?
Well, the structure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So really, three places. Your addition, and then some changed electrical, some changed plumbing. Not from simply moving Nina down the hallway and turn left.
Right. Well, and right now, that daycare is operating at a loss. So if we can add in, um, you know, how many more kids did we think we could add in? So another ten to, to twenty?
Yeah.
Possibly kids. And what would the average, I know they changed with, by age, but what would an average, do you think?
One seventy.
So one seventy, and if you're looking, and you're gonna, you're gonna probably max that out, you're looking at another, you know, almost three thousand dollars a week, right? So it's three thousand dollars a week extra income that is going to be able to help in that budget shortfall that we're taking now, where that money would be then better placed to, to actually do what it's supposed to do and not be costing us money.
Sure.
But maintaining the program and not costing the district money that we need to be using in other resources, so.
Exactly.
And remember, our shortage on budget in regards to club bosses largely a factor of our rates are as low as they can be because we're trying to make it palatable for our parents. Because our rates, and Nina's down the profile, are lower than everybody.
Yeah, I think we're right in there with Unity right, right now. And Unity actually has a standalone building that they're running out of, I believe, um, which was no small feat, just to pour the slab there. I mean, that was a, you know, that's an expensive project. Just to pour a slab, to have a standalone building on that may or may not survive.
And they, they don't do food service.
Uh, that's what, right.
They don't even have a kitchen.
No, they don't have a kitchen, and that's meals, meals are, they get a dollar for breakfast, two dollars for lunch. Um, but that's coming from somewhere, but I think it's packaged, and then anything under the age of one, you have to bring your own, so. Um, I guess that was kind of where it was going with our food and all of that too, so.
One thing I want to clarify, when I said forty-two percent, that was the non-parents. The parents were sixty percent, and the blended is fifty-four.
Because you remember the high.
I zoomed in too far.
Remember, the, 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 the strongest number of likely voters is not necessarily your parents of kids that go to school.
Right.
It's your thirty-five to fifty-four year old folks that are just living here.
Yeah, yeah.
So the timeline, again, no decisions are made here this evening. This is purely informational, is that we meet on the twentieth. This is an item on the docket. You may very well not come to a decision on that day. If you do, then we have corporate counsel from Baird Financial Rights referendum questioner questions. They have their attorneys do that. You view those questions. The tentative date is the first week of January. Haven't nailed the date down yet, because I haven't communicated with you. So you can see it before you vote on it. It would be a bad thing to vote on a question that was unclear, and then people get confused, including us. So you see it, vet it, look at it. And then on the seventeenth, you make a motion to pass a resolution for a referendum questioner questions, having already seen, seen it a couple of weeks prior. And then after that, April fifth is the day that folks would go to the polls, if you will.
And you said the attorneys would propose those questions for the referendum?
They write it for us.
Yep.
Because they're better at it than us.
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
Basically, I'm not interested in writing that.
So, um, I'm also wondering about seeing some plans for the high school before we, you know.
Plans, meaning?
Um, kind of like this, as far as what we think we're talking about changing before we, and I think that needs to go to the community before we are voting on a referendum, like, what, what changes are gonna be at the high school? Obviously, like, the roof and the mechanical and those things you can't see, but what are some of the things that they are going to see? You know, and I know we have that, kind of that list that was out there, but.
Sure, what's created, if you choose to go to referendum through resolution in January, is a referendum presentation. We would have community sessions here. I would be presenting, and if you wanted to join, presenting all over the place for folks that are interested to come and see. And as part of that, you would see plans that Troy would mock up in regards to what's happening. You know, unfortunately, some of what happens at the high school is, you can't really see it, because it's in the ceiling, it's in the walls. It's not, there's your brand new field house. I mean, that, you can get a palpable feeling of.
It's, it's not a referendum that people are gonna walk in and say, wow, look what they did. Unfortunately, it's gonna be a referendum where people are gonna walk in and say, what changed?
Right.
And a ton is gonna change, but it's gonna be things that aren't necessarily visible, but it's just, um, it's just a lot of invisible.
But even as some of these simple things, and like, the weight room is one of the things that we talked about, that there's weights in the halls, you know what I mean? Some of those kinds of things, I think, that will be, you know, and, and again, we've talked about the idea of of moving the office or expanding the cafeteria, the kitchen, you know, those kinds of things. I think it would be good for people, you know, and for us to be able to see even what are some of those things. Because even though, though, that's not where most of your money is going, it's gonna make a difference in the appearance and the feel, you know?
Sure, it's sort of the, it's sort of the other end of the spectrum of where K A spent much of the last couple of years down in Hudson. And I've been to Hudson many times. When you walk into that new high school, it's not a new high school, but it might as well be, that you, a lot has changed. You won't miss it when you walk up the walk to get into the door. A ton has changed. Here, it's just, it's just a different thing.
This one's gonna be your staff and students, in terms of indoor equality and, and other things like that, and maybe better restrooms. It's gonna be a lot of that. Which is important.
Well, I want to thank you, Troy, for the work that you did to put this, together this presentation, and, and John for your assistance in trying to cost this out, because it is certainly a moving target. Nina and Cheryl for uh, working after hours today to come up with option six. Um, we all saw it an hour after it was finished, so that's pretty incredible. And also thank you to the members of the board for a quality conversation about really important topic.
Don't forget Becky.
Don't forget Becky.
Man.
What did Becky do?
She puts it up there.
I, I could think, I could do a public declaration of thanks for Becky every day, not just today. So that brings us, I, I think, to the end.
Anybody else that wants to add anything? We've got a lot to digest here and look at, and. Yeah.
Um, I think that this is a, a great plan. I think if you sold it on the safety aspect, the wall is a huge issue to the public. I have a question that's completely off this topic.
Go ahead, Steve.
If, if we're spending so much money on deferred maintenance, what's the next referendum look like? Is it more deferred maintenance? Are we constantly chasing, or are we working to get ahead?
I don't think we could predict what it would be, but I would imagine that when you talk about priority twos, those are items that are five, seven, eight years out, correct? And when you're talking priority threes, those are ten, fifteen year out. But I think priority twos will be here soon enough. Yeah, you would be constantly chasing some, but we're biting off a big chunk of it right now. Based on community comments in survey, the item that folks brought up the most was athletic facilities. That came up all the time in the community comments unsolicited, because it wasn't even a question. So if you're gonna address that, that's a whole nother animal as well, because we do, in comparison to many of our neighbors, do not have the greatest athletic facilities. We have pieces of great athletic facilities or bleachers and concession stand and press box. But if you've taken a look at the baseball press box, you get a fifty, sixty mile per hour win. You might not have a baseball press box. I mean, that might be next, it's possible.
What's the, when you talk about a thirty-five million referendum, what's the timeframe on a paydown?
Timeframe on a what?
On a paydown.
Oh, no.
Twenty years.
Twenty years. In the timeframe on getting that done, I mean, it isn't that you're swinging hammers on, on April sixth. Obviously, that doesn't occur. You gotta draw up plans. That's probably a six month process in and of itself.
Yeah, six to twelve.
Six to twelve, and then you're going in and doing bids and contracts. Already behind schedule. Bids and contracts, so you're looking at, you're, you're probably getting to work in the spring of twenty-three. And then you're working through the spring, through the summer, through the school year, through the next summer, and then hopefully done in August of twenty-four. That would be, because you're working while we're having school. You're just picking your spots where you're doing that.
And when you talk about, um, in the survey, the graph of, of the, the tax burden on individuals, and bring this back up to an average.
Yes.
What would, you know, and if you've got some, some of the maintenance, thirty-five thousand, or thirty-five million dollar maintenance that would be taken care of in this, and your eight and a half million goes down to six million or whatever.
If you're thirty, you're, I think I know where you're going. Your thirty-five million dollar question is a hundred and fifty dollars per hundred thousand dollars of home. So do the math, three hundred thousand for two hundred thousand dollars a home. That math continues to extrapolate out. If you add on another three, four, or five, or whatever it is in the second question in that pass, you're simply adding on twenty-five, thirty-five, forty-five more per hundred thousand dollars of home.
In the survey, seven million would equate to about thirty dollars per hundred thousand valuation of a house. That's, so that can give you a benchmark there, but so you'd be probably at eight and a half million, probably looking at forty.
And I think the, the other part of your question was, where does that place you in terms of, are you still below average, at average, above that?
We'd be above average, but, but the, you know.
We would move from.
Forty dollars or eighty dollars for the future is, to me is nothing. If I recognize to somebody, it is something.
Sure.
Yes.
Where it, where it slots us in, then in comparison, excuse me?
You're talking per year, too. That's per year.
Yes. Where that slots us in, in state average is, I think, nine, two, seven mil rate. We're at seven, nine, seven, or seven, nine, eight is the number we're at right now. So that would move us to approximately nine point five. So we're still in, in the middle. I just literally got today mil rates for the entire state. I didn't have a chance, because they look at four hundred different mil rates, but there are a whole bunch of nines, tens, elevens, and twelves. There are not a lot of sevens and eights. In our area, very few. In our conference, there are schools that are up over eleven. And they have bigger needs than we do, so obviously their financial picture is different than ours. So yeah, it would slot us in slightly above average, but again, it's about making an investment in your future. This, plus the other items we've talked about in the thirty-five, are making a huge investment in our future. That would pay dividends for decades.
And the thirty-five, was that before everything inflated, or is that?
If you got a crystal ball, I could borrow it. Because I'd love to see one.
No, no, I'm just.
But yes.
You know, the, does that thirty-five million then accomplish what you need to accomplish?
I'll, I'll answer. I, did I include inflation in the numbers when we, when George and I, when the team put together? Yes. Is it keeping up with inflation? I don't know. So it's, it's a, it's a battle. When we get into drawings, there's a lot of estimating and using different type of mechanical systems, the materials to keep it on budget.
Right. So, so where's a very good question is, if, if, you know, if you're talking high level, that thirty-five million gets you your maintenance taken care of, and some of that includes this. If the inflationary truth is that you need to do thirty-five million, and now you're talking not an additional six million, and an additional seven million, right, or seven and a half million, just because the costs of everything have gone up, do you have to sell it then to the public as a thirty-five million dollar referendum for deferred maintenance and an eight and a half million dollar tab on to accomplish this?
That's, that's where maybe the water would be a little clearer
Yeah.
into questions. So that people would understand that, you know, because of inflation or, or you open part of the building up and you go, oh my, yeah, now we got, now we got a bigger issue than we do, and we're gonna spend a half a million dollars, which happens really rapidly.
I guess I would, I would just caution that whoever makes the decision on what the number is represented to the public, that they don't try to bury costs.
Well, I think that's where, that's kind of where that discussion was happening of
Yeah.
of, we, it's hard to trim enough and say that when you don't know what extra's gonna happen, and that, that was the point of where I was going with that, is you can't trim enough off to try to fit it in there to say, we, we could save enough because we've overinflated that, that number a little bit. Like, the worst case scenario number, but because of the inflation, and because you don't know what you're gonna find, and because of that, there's no way you compare that down enough to say, even the worst case scenario isn't built up enough to say we can get all of this still done for that worst case scenario number. So that's, that was kind of the conversation that we were having.
John and I have been doing these types of projects for, you know, I've, thirty-two years I've been doing schools, and, you know, I do I went and set down a pencil, without how many different types of buildings and things like that. I can walk into a building and say, this building is gonna cost this much to renovate versus one that is twenty years older or twenty years newer, just because you do enough projects and you get a sense of, of what the infrastructure is, or, you know, we've already taken apart some of the buildings in this district enough that we know what we're getting ourselves into, to, to some degree. There's always, there's always things that you don't know, but, you know, through the wall projects we've already done, we know what it's gonna take to do the other four million dollar worth of work. And some of the improvements we've made inside the high school, we know what those systems are, we know what the clearances are. So hopefully, we know the numbers well enough that, you know, it takes some of the guesswork out. I hope it's taken like sixty percent of the guesswork out, but I'm glad I have my job and so John's.
I appreciate your question, Steve, because it's a very legitimate question in these strange inflationary times, because it's never been stranger. I, I feel great confidence in working with Troy and with John and with Lisa Voison from Baird, and the reason I do is because they've done so much work in this area. And sadly enough, I don't want to date all you guys, but it's like a hundred years of experience between the three of you. I mean, that's a lot of stuff. And uh, they have been spot on, and their work with us in their prognostications. The other piece of this that I feel great confidence in is the fact that we've been abundantly, excessively transparent about what our intentions are here. We have had meeting after meeting after meeting where we wanted folks, including this one, to invite people to be, just as yourself, part of this conversation. And we'll continue to do that, and I think with a compelling, reasonable argument, this community would be supportive of both pieces. And I think we would be pleased at the end if they were as supportive as we think we are, and I, I think we're accurate in that assessment. People feel strongly. People have been very supportive of the school system for generations. Nothing's changed about that, even in strange inflationary times.
I, I personally think that the meeting tonight, because I'm a business owner, and we were hitting on that topic at that last meeting, about the, the Avery Economic Program and the businesses supporting the need for additional daycare. I still think that there's an avenue for support from businesses to help offset some costs somehow, some way. I don't know how, but there's, there's such a, we need more people working in our area, and this is a huge draw. If they can find a way to get their kids somewhere local.
Strong schools have strong communities and vice versa. That's reality.
It's a chicken and egg.
It is. And then there.
I was just gonna say that. It's a chicken and the egg, and you're just really talking about that when you're talking about eighty dollars per year on my taxes is nothing for me, but when we talk about all of our elderly folks on social securities and fixed income, it's a lot to them, and it's, it's, it's really the difference, especially when we're talking about inflation, not just inflation of the costs in, for building materials, but we're talking inflation and cost of food and where that's going, and gas, where that's going, and fuel. That may very well be the, the deciding factor. If they can afford their taxes, do they have to come on their heating bill? Are we gonna put them into energy assistance? The more young families that we have here, that move here, that have taxes here, that can help offset that burden, the better. But when you don't have daycare, it's hard to, to have that too, and it's just a strange time for everybody. People working, people owning homes. Do we have homes available here for people to purchase? It's one of the great things that this district is doing, is adding a home every year, every other year right now that's attracting young, younger families here to have a place to own a home, and it's another property on the tax roll. So you're right, it's, it's a huge conundrum of where do you go, and the concerns that we have to balance as a board, and our obligations to the taxpayers, all taxpayers in this community, not just our parents. and our obligations to the taxpayers, all taxpayers in this community, not just our parents. So. But our elderly people have been above and beyond always in the twenty-some years that I've had kids in this district, even though it meant their taxes to go up or stay the same and not come down, they, they've supported us. They, they know the value that this district has on this community. I, I think of summertime when I actually, when I come into Amory, the vibe in town is so much different in the summertime than it is during the school year when stuff is going on here. I mean, there's just more traffic when, in our, in our town, when the school's in session, you have kids that are doing things and people that are out doing things. And in the summertime, it's not quite the same to come into town as it is when school is in session. And I think we got a glimpse of that in twenty twenty when we shuttered these buildings in March. It was a very sad time.
Was. Yeah, it, small, the charm of small communities in so many ways is the crown jewel that is their school system. It's the hub of everything that goes on during your weeks and your Friday night ball games, et cetera. You know what memory I'm gonna take from school today? It won't, I'm sorry, it won't be from this meeting. It'll be, it'll be from this morning when I was standing in the hallway watching kids come in the building with Cheryl this morning. And I don't know if you remember what you said to me. Kids were walking down the hallway and he said, isn't this beautiful? This, all these kids? And this is just a random Tuesday in the middle of December, getting ready for Christmas break. And that was even in and around the midst of three kids spontaneously falling on the ground, which we still don't know what happened. They literally were standing and then they were laying on the ground. Um, it was.
They're used to carrying their breakfast with their menu.
It was quite a scene. But it would, it, yes, absolutely. It was beautiful. Absolutely, it is.
I, you know, I think of the time, the days when I used to sub here and I, I love teaching the sixth through twelfth graders and that's where my heart is. But I did sub in the elementary school, um, just because there was a need and I did come. But, and I don't love subbing for little kids, but I love coming into the building and seeing all of those little kids so energetic and in the hallways and smiling. And it's like, how do you have a bad day? When you literally see all these little kids. I just, I, I can't. I mean, I can understand about three hours in how you have a bad day. But for the three minutes that you're in, you can't have a bad day.
Well, the one thing we talked about here, and I'm not gonna put a damper on it, but, uh, um, the projects and, and a timeline. So, you know, we kind of said, hey, get the referendum, get drawings done, start twenty twenty-three. I think there's plenty of projects that we can start right away.
After the referendum passes?
Yes.
Yeah, there's some to peel off fairly quickly.
Right, right. Maybe we got some true wall flashing. We got some electrical work that can be done. Yeah, so it isn't like we're gonna stand still.
Virtually working with George right now on replacing the mechanical units at, uh, at the, at the middle school.
Yep.
So all of that will be bid and ready to go. Um, you know, the moment, um, the moment the referendum passes essentially.
Yep.
And, uh, and those are all things that we know are gonna happen regardless of if the referendum passes or not. It has to be done. So it's a good, good investment for the district. But, you know, if you wait for those units and you're gonna lose another year of inflation, labor costs, it's hard enough to get all those things. But if we can get it to melt, I think right now we're hoping to get those drawings on the street in January. Um, so that literally units will be sitting outside the middle school when the students leave. Contractors will be walking in and, uh, and so we are doing everything we can to, uh, to push projects along that make sense with George's schedules and budgets overall. And, uh, and make sure that, you know, we're gonna have the best value we possibly can to make sure that we're not continuing to, to fall behind on inflation, you know, across the board for the, for the entire duration. So.
And this may be a question for Lisa, but if the referendum passes, when do taxes change? Like, when does that hit?
Those are all financial questions that are down the road.
Okay.
To get into that would be a rabbit hole beyond belief this evening. Because there's a borrowing piece. When do you borrow? How do you borrow? How much do you borrow?
Right.
That whole thing. Steve, yes.
They'll ask us to do a cash disbursement, like how soon we need the money. So.
And we've already begun talking to Lisa about some of this. Go ahead.
So it ramps up over time by the time you get here with that prediction. So it'll, it'll be a good year into it if not to before it really hits.
Okay.
Excellent question.
We can talk about it later.
Lisa's the one.
Yeah.
Lisa will have a handle on it. She's done plenty of these.
It's good for the public to know that too.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Yeah, and I got a community comment, uh, about knowing what's going on. And the comment they said is, can we see like a flyer or something? So is there something that we need to put together that would say, you know, so that it went in a mailing for all district residents?
The first item out of the gate, once you decide to, if you choose to do this in January, is in essence a Q and A to answer your big ticket questions. And then as part of that, or the next step in that is a flyer about, okay, what is it that you're seeking to do in short form? Your two or three or four page, what is it in short form that you're seeking to do? Because folks, even if they filled out the survey, they're not gonna remember what it was.
Right.
And we have two people that are excellent at doing that work, Becky and Tracy, to get that done. I, we believe we've received high marks on our communication efforts here recently and we're not gonna do anything different moving forward. We're gonna continue to communicate. So yes.
I would assume that we would be putting that out on our website.
Everywhere.
Putting it out on the community newsletters.
Everywhere.
You know, all of that stuff. I would assume that that would be, kind of like we did the last, well, I was the last referendum.
Um, public presentation.
Yep.
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 And K A helps with, with that as well.
Tom boards and.
Yep.
We'll strategize with you. Yes, there'll be flyers that can get mailed out, but today's technology, you know, we've, we've been calling it a digital backpack. You know, for parents where you can, you can tailor message to elementary parents or middle school or high school or immediate and sort of that. And there's gonna hopefully be a support group too on Facebook and.
Meta. It's not like Facebook, John. It's Meta.
Yeah. What is it?
Meta, isn't it?
Oh, huh.
Never think.
I think Meta owns, or is the company that owns Facebook.
Yeah, okay.
That people are better than me to do that.
I don't, yeah.
I forgot that that even happened until you just let that. Facebook on there. Yeah, you're right.
Yeah. But there are. We do a lot of different means and, and, yeah.
Out of all the people in this room, Keith, you would be the least likely that I would have decided to say that. I am shocked.
I amaze you.
You're, you're, you must have heard it all for the day.
All right.
All right, I make a motion to adjourn.
There we go. Do we have a second?